All right, I will call the November twenty seventh meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors to order. I will note that we did meet in executive session where we discussed the appointment of committee members on our personnel matters. With that, Mr. Neese, please call the roll. Here.
Ms. Roberts, like, uh?
Yeah.
Mr. Partridge here. Mr. Russo is absent. Ms. Chanless?
Here.
Your solicitor, engineer, and manager are here.
Thank you very much. We will now move down to the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. We'll start with the moment of silence. And we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Section five, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Same.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. Like, cap, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section six, public comment for agenda items only. If there's any members of the public who wish to say anything, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Louis Rosenthal, twenty Harrison. I have comments on the budget. I see that they're at the end of um, agenda section ten. You want me to wait then or go through all that? You've got a bunch of other stuff ahead of it.
Where, uh?
Ten point eight, I think, in them.
Under Steve's report.
Okay, um, let's, uh?
I'm good either way.
Let's have him do his presentation and then you can provide the comment.
Just so you know, Mr. Chairman, I'm, my only update would be just that the budget's on the website for people to review. So that it's, there's not gonna be a long thing.
Louis, did you hear that? Sorry, I didn't even, he, all the Steve's, the report is gonna be, is that the budget's on the website and it's available for public inspection. So there is no presentation, so if you want to provide comments now.
Resclusion, so I'll talk fast. Again, Louis Rosenthal, twenty Harrison Drive. Um, I was not at the last Supervisor's meeting. I replayed the um, meeting and, and listened to the comments of, of the board. Um, I appreciate the concern over tax increases, um, but I would advise caution, um, or, or offer caution um, with continuing to utilize reserves and, and I'm troubled with actually classifying uh, reserves as a revenue source, which is sort of the way we open up budgets here. It's, it's really not. Uh, revenue is something we collect from others, not from ourselves. Um, and so that pattern um, um, continues. And if, if you look at some of the public documents available from Moody's, which provides ratings on debt instruments to municipalities, and I think our debt uh, gets rate, some of our debt instruments have been rated by Moody's. Uh, they, they caution about, um, what they consider managerial, uh, direction. And in the case of municipalities, that's the five uh, board members. And so there's a lot of discussion about the credit rating on, on some of our debt issues, and I would um, advise you to think about some of those things as you go forward. Nobody can ever blame you for balancing all of the expenses with all of the revenue we collect. I think most people would govern their own personal lives by, um, not overspending that which they don't bring into their home or to their household. And I would advise you to think about that as you go forward. Um, it is, um, just, it's not a good way to budget. So with that, I'll just offer those comments. Um, I will note that, um, it wasn't mentioned, um, th- there were some mentions of absolute tax increases, um, but the website doesn't actually indicate that in the deck and nor does it indicate a proposed mileage rate, which would result from, um, at least the proposed advertised, um, uh, tax increase. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Is there any other members of the public who have anything that they wish to provide for public comment? All right. We will now move down to section seven, seven point one. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. Like, cap, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to resolutions of recognition, eight point one. Consider approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven, recognizing Newtown Square Fire Chief Doug Everlaw. Uh, which I will read. So, resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven, recognizing Newtown Township Fire Chief Doug Everlaw for his years of service to Newtown Square Fire Company uh, and the Newtown Square community. Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, desires on behalf of the citizens of Newtown Township to publicly recognize the service of Newtown Square Fire Company Chief Doug Everloff to the Newtown Township community. And whereas, Chief Everloff has continuously served in the fire company since he was elected on June eleventh, nineteen eighty-four. And whereas, Chief Everloff has served in the fire company as a firefighter, engine lieutenant, engine captain, assistant chief, and chief for two separate terms for a combined total of thirty-nine years of service. And whereas, during his service with the fire company, Chief Everloff has been in a leadership position for approximately thirty-three of his thirty-nine years of service. And whereas, Chief Everloff's combined twenty-one-year tenure as fire chief is the longest-tenured fire chief in Newtown Township history, surpassing Thomas J. Campbell's fifteen-year tenure as chief, which began in nineteen sixteen. And whereas, after nearly four decades of selfless and dedicated service, and while continuing to serve the fire company in other capacities, Chief Everloff will officially conclude his tenure as chief on December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township recognizes Chief Doug Everloff for his years of dedication and service, and directs that a copy of this resolution be provided to him at the celebration of the conclusion of his tenure as chief of the Newtown Square Fire Company celebrated on Saturday, December second, two thousand twenty-three, as Citizens Bank Park adopted this twenty-seventh day of November, two thousand twenty-three, and that's my motion.
Second.
Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Uh, I spoke to the chief before, before we came up here, uh, to say if, to see if he wanted to say a few words or not. Uh, but before we get into that, knowing that he's gonna have this resolution presented to him, uh, on Saturday. The only thing, uh, that I will add, and it'll probably be a little, uh, repetitive with what I'll say on Saturday, uh, is that there are certain things that you equate with to Newtown Township, and you think of either a symbol or a person. Right? So when you think of Rotary, you think of Sam Coco. When you think of the township, you think of the Actagonal Schoolhouse. When you think of the school district, for some reason, Nenadorian comes to my mind. And when I think of Newtown Square Fire Company, uh, there are three people who, uh, come up. Uh, one, which I'm sorry to lump you in this category, is Mike Kenny, right? Nobody wants to be categorized with Mike Kenny. Um, the other one is your wife, Beth, who, for as, you know, as much as you have dedicated your time to the community, she herself has dedicated a large portion of her time, of your two children's time, uh, to this community. And I actually learned when we were putting this together, this resolution, that you actually proposed during the Santa runs, you jumped off the back of a fire truck and proposed to her. So, yeah, the, the fire company runs deep on that one. And then the, and then the third person that we think of is you, right? Um, many of us have been in this community for a long time, and you have been that fire chief for that entire tenure. I mean, I, me, just personally, have lived in the township for twenty-five years, and twenty-one of those years, you were the fire chief, I mean. And growing up next to Mike Kenny, it was, it was the tripod. It was you, Mike, and Beth, right? So, uh, thank you for everything. It's been great growing up and seeing you, you know, serve our community, and it's been rewarding to be able to actually work alongside you in this capacity as a township supervisor. Um, so that was a lot, but. All right, get, get on up there. Well, let's vote on it first, make sure it's unanimous. Uh, so all those in favors, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Chief Everloff, the floor is yours.
Honestly, I thank you very much. You did more math and knew more about me probably than I knew just doing the math. Um, but it was an honor and a privilege to work with Board of Supervisors, you know, through many, many years, you know, we've had our ups and downs, but this group by far has been the best group of supervisors I've ever had to work with. From, you know, the station, you know, working with us through the station, the apparatus purchases, just whenever we come to the board with a request, you know, our meetings with Steve, our meetings with, with John, with Leonard, you know, I, I deeply appreciate it. You guys truly have the community at your best, uh, interest when it comes time to the fire company. It was a privilege, uh, working with you folks and, uh, not going away. You know, I'm just not gonna be in the leadership role, but I'll be there for the, uh, the younger members that, uh, you know, come up through the organization. It's time to step down and let somebody else, uh, take over and bring some fresh blood to the organization. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
We should, um?
All right, now we'll move into presentations, nine point one, police presentation, Chief Lund.
Pull up the.
While, while she's pulling that up, I just would like to make note for the record, uh, in case somebody is watching at home. It is not your screen that we're having, you're having problems with. Our cameras have stopped working tonight. Um, so you still have volume, but you will not have, uh, images, and we apologize for that. Please feel free to go to our website and pull up the agenda, and you can pull up the attachments that were attached to the agenda.
Okay, thanks for the opportunity tonight to present, uh, to you some information on license plate reading cameras and their impact on security and efficiency. So what are license plate reading cameras? More communities, businesses, and public safety agencies have begun investing in high-tech security solutions, among which license plate reader technology has proven critical in investigating crimes. License plate reader cameras can be placed anywhere to capture data about license plates and vehicles used to commit crimes, so action can be taken quickly and efficiently. When it comes to protecting homes, communities, and businesses, license plate reader cameras provide additional protection, given that the majority of crimes involve the use of a vehicle. Next slide, please. How it all works, so license plate reading cameras use optical character recognition to automatically capture and analyze license plates. There's three types of LPR cameras. There's fixed cameras, which are generally placed at intersections, mobile cameras, which are affixed to cars, and there's also handheld LPR cameras. So, the LPR cameras capture images of license plates. They process the data to extract the characters on a license plate and compares them to databases or hot lists. Some fully managed hot lists include NCIC, which is the National, uh, Criminal Information Center. These include amber alerts and silver alerts. PennDOT's databases, which include suspended registration plates and expired registration plates. And they also include, uh, Pennsylvania and New Jersey Megan's Law offenders. Next slide, please. So, the LPR's assist in solving crimes, monitoring, they can monitor high-prime areas and identify vehicles, uh, linked to criminal activity. Slide. So, up here, we have a couple examples of how this technology has been used recently to, um, solve some crimes. Top left there, you see, is, uh, there was a road rage incident about a year ago in Springfield Township where, uh, early morning traffic, one driver shot and killed another one. Uh, through the use of this technology, they were able to backtrack and identify the car, the license plate, and eventually the shooter, and make the arrest. Um, and the top right here, that's an image of Route two oh two in West Goshen, where a few years back, um, where two lanes merged into one. Another road rage incident where a driver shot and killed another driver. But through the use of this technology, they were able to, to follow the car through the different communities, uh, to, and link the car to the owner and driver who was later arrested for the crime. Then the center there is just a, a clip of how that the technology was used to solve a kidnapping. Next slide. So here's a couple local examples. Uh, the top left there is an image of PNC Bank at Westchester Pike in two fifty-two. Uh, a little while back, we had an armed robbery at that bank. Um, image here, middle, this vehicle here, this is from their drive-through camera, but that, that white SUV went down Chapel Road just prior to the person walking onto the PNC Bank property into the bank, presenting a gun and robbing the bank. Uh, this, this image is the picture of the same vehicle parked outside the apartment complex where the person lives a few days later when we were able to identify him. Had we had the, a license plate reader at the intersection of two fifty-two and Westchester Pike that day, we would have known who, uh, robbed the bank within thirty minutes. Middle image is of the Ellis Preserve construction site. There's a camera there, uh, that, in that red box, there is a pickup truck that was used in the commission of a theft from the construction site. Through the use of LPR technology, uh, from a different township who assisted us with this, we were able to identify that truck. Try to get the license plate and identify the owner and who committed that, that to make the arrest. This image on the right, top right, is a pickup truck trailer and mini excavator that was just stolen from the Ellis Preserve construction site. That image is from the front of the firehouse. This image here, frame camera, uh, in Ridley Township, where that same truck, trailer, and mini excavator was found parked. And we were able to, uh, recover the mini, stolen mini excavator and make the arrest. So all these were done through the use of camera technology. Next slide, please. Another use of this technology is for traffic studies. Uh, we can do traffic counts if you have them at the intersection. You can do it, get a traffic count at any time. Week, two weeks, month, whatever, whatever you're looking for. Next slide, please. So, ethical concerns. LPR technology isn't infringing on anyone's privacy. The police have always been able to run license plates as license plates are issued uh, to be used on public roadways for identification purposes. Furthermore, this system is much more objective than a person doing this job. It automatically checks every plate, and so there's no discrimination that could be involved. So the costs, we're requesting one intersection, Westchester Pike and two fifty-two, be equipped with LPR cameras at a cost of eight thousand three hundred dollars, um, annually over a five-year term. Uh, the township would have to provide for cellular data coverage, uh, for that intersection to make the system fully capable. Uh, that, that cost will be thirty-six dollars a month or four hundred thirty-two dollars a year. So, this is some of the neighboring townships who are already using the technology. Marple Township, Upper Providence, Radnor, Springfield, Willistown, East Town, Melbourne Borough, West County, Scotia, and West Scotia, and West Whitewyn, it's a different, Upper Marion, Upper Darby, Aston. Um, we've also spoken to, uh, a few different HOAs in the township who have security concerns for their, their neighborhoods. And, um, everyone we've talked to is either looking into or has already, uh, purchased LPR technology for their, for their area. So it's, it's very popular and there's a lot of interest, uh, from the community in it already.
So, Chief, I just have a question. Um, the communities, the HOAs, would they be connected? Would you have access to their information?
So the, the company that we're looking to work with is Plate Logic. They don't deal with any HOAs directly. Um, they, they don't like the ethical concerns there with homeowners association having access. And you can only, so the system only gives you a snapshot of the license plate and the, and the vehicle. So you can't get any personal information from that. You have to have access to state databases to actually take that snapshot, that license plate image, and then find out who owns the vehicle and who, who was possibly driving. Um, we're allowed to do that as a criminal justice agency. We are also audited by the state, so we, we can't do that without a criminal justice purpose. So we can't just, you know, willy-nilly run people's registrations. We have to have a criminal justice purpose to do that.
So if, if, and if a HOA does have that, it's just that in case of, in case something happened, they would turn that, that information over to you?
So the, the HOAs that are looking to use this company,
Mm-hmm.
they, they, they told the HOAs, we will not deal with you. We will certainly install the equipment for you.
Understand, okay.
But the police department has to administer the system.
Understood, okay. So they would own the equipment, but you guys would, you're still?
Company actually owns the equipment.
Okay.
But we would, uh, work with the company to administer this.
So the company would go, or, uh, yeah, you would be the contact for the company if something happened, as opposed to an HOA?
Yes.
To, for ethical, uh, reasons. Makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Chris, uh, so the eighty-three hundred, that's already in the budget request for?
Yes.
And Steve, that, that's something that's, uh, that hasn't been removed. That's stated, right?
Yeah, it's still in the budget.
Okay, good, good. And, um, so one-time cost and then four thirty-two a year?
Well, no, it's the.
What, what eighty-three hundred for the?
Per year. Cost.
That's an annual cost.
Yes.
Okay.
Plus the four hundred thirty-two for the cellular data.
Okay.
Was it, all the information, dude, that is stored in the cloud, that's?
Will you have, um, real-time access to that camera from the station? I mean, can, can we look, can somebody monitor, you know, the intersection from the station for whatever reason?
It's, so it's not a live feed?
It's not a live?
No. It's, it's, what it does is it's, it's taking snapshots, sending them to the cloud.
Okay, but you don't, not?
So we could then search that database.
Right.
But we're not monitoring it, not a live.
Okay, you don't.
Live, where you can watch.
No live feed, okay.
That's the, um, so I wanted, just to build off of that, because I know that there are some concerns, um, from people about, you addressed us in the beginning of the presentation, uh, about Big Brother, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
This is not CCTV, correct?
Correct.
This is not, as we just kind of went through with Supervisor Partridge, gonna be a live feed, correct?
Correct.
Essentially, it just comes on, it, it's gonna be running, you know, throughout the day, but it only gets, um, initiated, if you will, when a law enforcement need gets triggered, correct?
Correct.
So whether that's a hit and run, or, uh, burglary, or, I know, another holdup.
If I could give another example.
Give it.
We had a, a hit-and-run accident on Westchester Pike between Brinmore Avenue and Rhodes Avenue. One car coming off of, um, Brinmore Avenue, making the right on the Westchester Pike, another car traveling west, straight on Westchester Pike, collided, one car took off. If we had had that technology in place, the, the person who, whose car was struck could say, I was struck by a black Ford pickup truck traveling west on Westchester Pike. The accident happened at ten thirty AM, so you can go in and say, you know, between ten twenty-five and ten thirty-five AM, black Ford pickup truck. And it'll give you an image of every black Ford pickup truck in that timeframe that went through the.
Got it. Um, and I know that we're, this is scheduled for two fifty-two in Westchester Pike. Do you feel that there is a need, maybe not next year, but in the next year or two years, where you're going to want to see these at other intersections, or do you think two fifty-two and Westchester Pike is all that?
I, I think the need will be there. I think the need is there, but like to try, let's do a trial. Let's do one intersection. We can then show the results of.
Um, after the five years, what does that annual cost go up to?
They don't know at this time, so the, that annual cost includes software licenses, maintenance of the equipment. Should something happen, they come out and fix the equipment. So, that's what those costs are. I don't think they can project five years from now what the, what this cost will be. They, they would be very similar. It's not like there's a big escalator at the end of that.
Understood. And then I know last year, when this was initially discussed, there was an opportunity for a grant. Is that grant still available? Is there any grant funding at all for it?
Quick question. Um, is it, is this something that you would also be using for, like, ticketing purposes, or is, okay?
Well, you, you can, it, it does connect to like a hot list where, uh, if a, if PennDOT has suspended somebody's registration for not having insurance or something like that, it could trigger a hit on that. So somebody, somebody who, who's, uh, uh, license plate has been suspended by PennDOT. If it comes through the intersection, it could trigger that, because that's on a hot list, that, um, that license plate, PennDOT has put that on a hot list. So you would get, you could get him, uh, if you set the system up that way, you could get an alert that that vehicle just went through the news.
But it's not something that would, like, automatically send that vehicle?
No, no, no.
It's, would come to you.
Yeah, that, what that would be, if there was, if the system was set up, so it would send a message to an officer on duty who was in the area and, and saw the vehicle, you could then stop it. But it's not something where you're gonna go, oh, there was one, let's send them a ticket. That's not what we're.
Any other questions from the board?
Uh, if I, if I could just real quick, I want to make one comment, just so that there's clarification. There is also in the budget, a cameras at that same intersection for the purpose of the timing of that light. So when you look at the budget, there's two different camera systems that are in the budget. So I just wanted to clarify that, uh, with the board and also with the public if somebody's looking. So if somebody sees the other one, I think it's about fourteen thousand, if I remember right, George. Twenty-four, okay.
I've, I've. Both directions.
It, it, and so it's all directions, it's twenty-four thousand. So this, this number, if you see that number in the budget, that's not this set of cameras. It's a different set of cameras. So I just want everybody to be aware.
Let me answer this question. That camera that you just mentioned right there, is that gonna help with that turn coming off of two fifty-two, going on the Western Pike when you make a left? Because it only allows, like, not even a car.
Yeah, so now the timing is always maintained by PennDOT. They tell us what the timing is allowed to be. But what the cameras that we're proposing are for the detection itself, uh, we have been having problems at that intersection for a couple of years now. Uh, because of the distance of the intersection, uh, because the loops themselves fail, because the cameras themselves. Uh, because of the distance of the intersection, uh, because the loops themselves fail, because the cameras themselves uh, that are in place now can be affected by weather and by fog and things like that. So the cameras that we're recommending are are thermo cameras and and they detect right through anything that's there.
So it's gonna help me on that left hand turn going on the Westchester Pike?
The answer is no.
No, it's not.
Okay. Twenty four thousand for that. Thank you, George. Uh, is there any other questions from the board for Chief Lund with regards to the license plate reader? Alright, so there doesn't seem like there's any objections, so we'll continue to keep it in the budget and we'll have further discussion within the budget that comes against. Uh, and then you have the second presentation, Chief, which is the Police Department Patch redesign.
So, as you can see on the screen, we we've a couple of months back, probably three months or so now. Captain John Noel redesigned our patch. This is probably version number three. Uh, it's been tweaked a few times to resizing and and the font, things like that. But as you can see, um, what this does is this would identify our police department as actually being in Newtown Township, Delaware County. We're often Newtown Township is oft- often confused with Newtown Township in Bucks County. We are constantly getting calls, emails, mail from that that is meant for Newtown Township in Bucks County. People, it's a common mistake that people make. We've even had people show up here looking, thinking they're in Newtown Township, Bucks County. So our current patch uh, design here is just a keystone with the coat of arms of Pennsylvania. Um, other than the word Newtown on it, it doesn't link us to this township. Uh, so what we what we would like to do is change the patch to what the image you see there. Readily identify us as being from Newtown Township in Delaware County. This this it adds the seal that is already in use by every other department in the township. Um, and we just, just recently got the real image, well, not just an image, it's the actual patch that we're asking to go to. I'd like to see it.
Chris, is that the uh, is is that the primary reason, the confusion between the townships?
Yeah, and and it's the rest of the township departments all use.
Right.
That logo.
Would there be?
Identified as Newtown Township.
Would would there be any consideration for the same content with the design that you're currently wearing? The shape.
The keystone.
Content, putting it in what's on your shoulder.
Um, that we we kind of just wanted a redesign of it. We we thought that with this circular image of the um, of Toddwell Schoolhouse with the wording Delaware County, Pennsylvania, we thought it, you know, it looks appropriate with that. The, you know, this is more of a Pennsylvania state, the Keystone, Keystone State. I think we are one of three tan, three law enforcement agencies in Delaware County that have a, use the Keystone currently. Um, it's us, Chester City, and I think Ridley Township. Every other law enforcement agency has a different, uses a different uh kind of Keystone.
When, when would you implement it?
Next year.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a, uh, do we need any action on that, or?
Uh, I would just mention that it's in the budget under for police, I think it's police donations.
It's approved with the budget.
It's approved with the budget. Um, if you want to take a a separate approval in the new year, and I and I know you're moving on, but if the board wished to take action together, we would bring it back before the board if they wanted that.
So I can't take action.
You can take action, I think, tonight. I don't think there's any reason why you can't. I'm just saying if if the board was wanting to tie it to the budget or tie it to next year, you can do that.
I think since it's in the budget, I don't think we need to vote on it.
Well, he said we can on the design. So I I'll make a motion that uh, not not for the cost of it, that um I I'll make a motion that we approve the new uh, patch design um, as as presented by the chief.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis to uh, approve the Police Department Patch redesign. Any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll move down to section ten, reports. Uh, Chief Lund, do you have anything to add or supplement to your report? Thank you very much. Chief Everloff, do you have anything to add or supplement to your report? Thank you very much. Public Works Director, Mr. Sharrett, anything to add or supplement to your report? Eric, Mr. Rescheck, anything to add or supplement to your report? I believe he's on. This Ballock Finance Director, do you have anything to add or supplement? Ms. Carusa, Library Director, do you have anything to add or supplement to your report? Thank you. Mr. Johnson, Township Engineer.
Yes, I'll just give a a quick update on uh, our Ellis Avenue sidewalk project. Uh, currently, the contractor is installing the last segment of sidewalk uh, along Ellis Avenue, along with the the two remaining driveway aprons. Um, and they're coordinating directly with the residents for that, so we anticipate that would be done this week. Next week, they would be installing the uh, additional section of sidewalk along Gallagher's Way, as long as replacing that existing section of curb uh, that you previously approved for the route of Ellis Avenue. Uh, the contractor currently have them uh, backfilling disturbing all stabilized areas, um, so that we can get through the rest of the winter with a nice clean looking backfilled site. And then once that's complete, they'll be moving into installing the stormwater uh, pipe within uh, the road.
Couple of questions for you. So when do you expect them to be done with restoration of the of the different properties?
So we have, there's, we're having a very long conversation with the contractor. He currently is backfilling anywhere along the sidewalk this week into next week, with the intention that it's going to be uh, matted. Uh, because we can't grow grass right right now. So we're gonna clean it up and stabilize, uh, so that you can grow grass when it actually basically when it becomes spring and walks up again.
And um, with regards to the stormwater pipe. So when are they, because I know they started digging uh, the corner of like Gallagher's Way and Ellis, I think, last week, and then it looked like they stopped. So when are they gonna be?
Right, so that's, right now, we're having them focus on getting the sidewalk and everything that's uh, on the front edge of the properties. They uh, Doug is basically the test bit where the excavation was. Lo and behold, the water main is three feet away from where the blue mark is. Um, so there, they just have to do a little bit coordinating uh, to find the water main and then run the storm sewer along there.
Okay, and then when's that segment from Gallagher's Way up to um?
The mid block of Gallagher's Way.
Yeah, when is that?
That should be, um, anticipate that next week.
Okay, so when will that whole entire sidewalk segment be walkable?
So that they are pouring along Ellis, the last section is being poured, uh, they poured a portion today and activated the rest, so by next week, we anticipate all the sidewalk installed.
And that also includes new curving in front of like Chestnut?
Uh, down a five.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, yes, that would be, that's projected for next week, that section of curve, yes.
Alright, um, the the only thing I just want to add there, I get it's a construction site. Um, and these guys are working and also unfortunately has been reported being harassed by some individuals, and so it kind of slows their progress down a little bit. But if you can have a conversation, continue to have a conversation with the contractor, the amount of mud already on brand new sidewalk there, I think is a little ridiculous. Um, and I think it was even more ridiculous that it was left like that going into Thanksgiving weekend, when some of that segment was open for people to walk on. And when I say open for people to walk on, whose home it is, i- it's right in front of their house, I mean, it was ridiculous. We received a complaint about it. I forwarded it off to you, to Steve, um, and to Steve Cosgrove. And, you know, it was addressed as much as it could be, but I don't understand why it's so hard for them to kind of keep it a little clean in their work site. Um, it's easier for me to say that, sitting here in a suit tie, I get it, but i- it's just, that's.
I I I understand your frustration, and I, we also share the same frustration as uh, as you're mentioning, Steve was watching them step into soil and then onto the sidewalk immediately afterward. I I understand, and we're continuing to have that.
So the last question I'll ask then on this, not to be dead horse, will those sidewalks, are they gonna, are they gonna clean them off before they, after they stabilize everything? Or after they pour the dirt for?
Uh, yeah, so when I have them cleaned off, yes.
Perfect. Alright, thanks, Eric. Uh, report from the Township Manager, Mr. Neese. Oh, I'm sorry, is there any questions from the board for Eric? Alright, if not, Mr. Neese.
I actually already gave my report earlier, unless you want me to give it again.
No, it's fine. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything. Add or supplement your report, Mr. Neese, now?
I do, I I do have one last thing on the reports that it was not related to the budget update, uh, but I do want you to know that um, Mr. Will Lightcap uh, is going to come back and serve uh, during the winter session. Uh, well, I said the winter session, hi- his winter session, uh, his his break from college, uh, so we will be using him uh, in the public works, which we've done in the past.
And I'll just note that uh, when Will was um, Will uh, his employment was brought to this board and he is my son. Uh, and I recused myself, and this is just a continuation of when um, he was hired uh, for the summer. He's come back as needed, and George has been very patient with him, because he's a interesting individual. But we appreciate it. Thank you.
And Steve, that approval was already done.
Yeah, your approval.
Great, so.
Yeah, you've already approved it.
Again, it's already a budgeted item.
It's already a budgeted item. It's, there's nothing, I just wanted you to know that he was coming back since it was, since he was.
Alright, and we'll move down to payments, uh, eleven point one. Can I get a motion approving the certificate of payment number two from LB Construction Enterprises totaling ninety two thousand, six hundred and sixty eight dollars and fifty cents? The Ellis Sidewalk Project leaving a balance of one hundred and fifty nine thousand, eight hundred and forty one dollars and fifty cents is approved by the Township Engineer. Motion was made by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Uh, any board discussion? So Eric, let me ask you this. What are, I mean, I know that you signed off on this, so you're comfortable moving forward with it. I mean, I know that there's been frustrations with this contractor. What is this, what is this escrow release for?
Um, so, well, escrow, this is the payment for the.
Yes, the payment, sorry.
Uh, payment. So this is for the um, uh, I mean, at this point, they've installed a substantial amount of the sidewalk and curb. So this basically covers the installed sidewalk and curb.
Okay, and then just, I'll just preempt this for number three. What's number three for?
Uh, that is they, uh, in the time, uh, they just, within the timeframe that, uh, since you've last uh, issued a payment number one, they had submitted two uh, certificates of payments. It's it's just additional curb and sidewalk installation.
And um, so with with that and the remaining one thirty two, and we're not up to that one yet, but I just have a question. So after we, if we in fact do approve both of these payments, if they don't continue to keep that area clean and they don't do the matting, do we have enough?
So you, in addition, if you approve both of these, that means we still have about a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars till the end of the project. We also still withhold ten percent contingency for any payment you have already approved.
Okay, so the the do approve this last payment and plus the ten percent, how much do you think is remaining? Um, the, you know, remaining on payments, not including the ten percent contingency?
Well, you still.
We know the one thirty two.
Still a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars of work still not to be paid, that has not been paid at this point.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Eleven point two, can I get a motion approving certificate for payment number three from LB Construction Enterprises totaling thirty three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars? For the Ellis Sidewalk Project leaving a balance of one hundred and thirty two thousand, seven hundred and fifty five dollars as approved by the Township Engineer.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Robert's Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Before, I'm sorry, before we move off of this, this what, this was covered by a grant, correct, Mr. Neese? This project?
Yes, it was being covered by a grant.
So then how does that work? Do we submit when it's all finished, then we submit to the grant? And then um, they see that we did in fact do the work and really the liens have been filed and, you know, the um, the contractor is paid and and everything, okay?
We we could, we could have submitted for partial payment, but I usually, because it's such a small project, I'm waiting till the whole project's done and I'll submit the whole thing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Section twelve bills, uh, I have approved, I have reviewed the bills, and I will make a motion to approve the bills on check register A dated November twenty seven, two thousand twenty three totaling one hundred and ninety eight thousand, ninety eight dollars and six cents. Motion was made by the Chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section thirteen, new business, thirteen point one, can I get a motion to approve the replacement of the heating boiler in the Public Works Building? The cost for the boiler and maintenance, excuse me, boiler and materials to be purchased by Newtown Township from FW Web Company is estimated at eleven thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and thirty four cents.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. Lightcap, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thirteen point two, can I get a motion approving the quote for installation for the aforementioned boiler by SD Hansel Company for nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety five dollars? Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion?
Um, I have a question. The building, the Public Works Building, George, when was that built? We seem to have problems with our heating and air conditioning.
Yeah, I I think the Public Works Building came online in like two thousand, late two thousand nineteen, is that about right? Eighteen, nineteen? Um, so yes, uh, but we have determined that there, there was a few problems, so that were fixed. Um, they now, the the boiler is not maintaining, and so the boiler we're putting in is actually a larger boiler uh, to maintain. Is that correct, George?
So the original one was undersized?
Undersized.
I think the one that was put in was undersized, yes.
Any other board discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Uh, thirteen point three, well, we can probably skip this one. I don't think we're gonna do anything on this one. But uh, can we get a motion accepting the resignation of Rose Vanacola of administrative support in the administration office with her last day being December fourth, two thousand twenty three? Unfortunately, the motion was made and seconded, made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion?
Yep. And we really appreciate it.
Good luck with everything. Thank you. For those of you who don't know, Rose is going back into education. She loves being with kids. And I guess we weren't too childish enough for her, which is, I guess, a compliment. It's just one aspect of it, so. So all those in favor uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thirteen point four, consider approving the hiring of a temporary employee to fill the open administrative support position as noted above. Motion was made by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor Robert's Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thirteen point five, can I get a motion approving the advertisement to fill three open administrative positions? Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? What are the three positions, just as a public notice?
Yes, so the three positions, um, first one is a administrative position that's been open in uh, Police Department since, I think, March, February, March eight timeframe. Um, and so uh, the second is a uh, administrative position that was opened up in the admin upstairs in uh, September, and then the third is the position that Rose is leaving.
Thank you. Any other board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thirteen point six, discussion with possible direction relative to the historic property zoning map amendments. Renee's.
Yes, so uh, the Historic Commission, Preservation Commission has met um, has done their fact finding on two different properties that are before you tonight. The first property uh, is the uh, what I understand is the um, caretaker's house for the paper mill uh, which is on Paper Mill Lane, um, and or mill worker's house, uh, and that is on Paper Mill Lane. Uh, the second one is And that is on Paper Mill Lane. The second one is the, the, the second one is the Friends Meeting House that is located off of two fifty-two. My understanding is both of these properties, the property owner is desiring to be listed as a class two historic property on, yeah, a class two historic property on our list, our resource list. And so as I understand the process, and Rich can correct me if I'm wrong, but what this would be is if you agreed to move forward with this, these would go to the Planning Commission for a planning commission review would be sent back to you because it's a map amendment, a zoning map amendment, it would be sent back to you and you would have an official hearing. At the time of the hearing, you would hear from either the historic commission or the property owner as to why they felt the property ought to be on the, on listed as a class two resource. And then at that time, you would have an opportunity to vote on those.
Any questions from the board? I guess the only question I have is what is the timeline?
So the timeline, really, there's nothing specific other than once you, once you agree to this, we have a thirty day posting before the property can have the actual hearing. So I would think we're looking at the second meeting in January at the earliest, just based on, I'm assuming you don't want to do this at the reword meeting in January, so we would look at the second meeting in January, most likely. Because it has to go to the planning commission.
So you post, you do that thirty, does that thirty day start after the planning commission or does it start?
I believe it's after the planning commission, correct? Posting, no. We're here.
What is the posting timeline?
I think it's seven days.
Weeks. Yeah. Fine.
You know, and I.
I think.
David, Rich, do you know, neither one of these properties, did they consider whether it qualifies as a class one resource?
Well, I thi- I think the question for the Friends Meeting House was definitely asked. But the way our definition of class one resource would require, the, I think the way it's listed is it actually requires the act, the action of, for the National Historic Registry. It has to be able to be on the National Historic Registry. I don't think they've gone through all that to make that. So they wanted to at least get it as a class two at this time.
By agreeing as, or listing it as a class two doesn't preclude us from moving it on as a class one in the future if it qualifies?
No. No conclusion. Any other? But somebody could also petition to remove a property on the list.
Any other questions or comments? So do you need a vote from us to say, I get to, it seems like we're all in agreement with this going before the planning commission and then working its way to us. So do you need any official action from us or?
Yeah, if you could vote to send it to the planning commission, take all necessary steps.
Perfect. So I will make that motion that Mr. Score just made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thirteen point seven, I get a motion approving the fee waiver request for the special event permit of two hundred and seventy-five dollars, as well as all township related fees from the Veterans Association for the following two events, the Holiday Toys Food and Clothing Drive and Reefs Across America.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. Lightcap, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
I do, I just want to make a clarity that it's actually two hundred and seventy-five for each event, because it's two separate events, but I just want to make sure the board is clear on.
Can I ask a quick question? Oh.
So I revise my motion to say special event permits, five hundred and fifty dollars.
My second.
Supervisor Chanlis.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I don't have any issue with it, but I was just curious, what are, what are the other township related fees?
Well, occasionally, I don't think in this case there will be much of any. Occasionally, we have to provide some additional police support. I know in this case, I talked to Chris, he thinks that additional police support will be folks who are actually already on. My understanding is when the convoy for the Reefs Across America comes in, they need, I guess, as all the trucks are turning in, they're, they block the traffic on West Esther Pike. So it's, you know, like a.
Stopped in front of that last year.
Yeah, it's what, about twenty minutes or something like that, or maybe, yeah, but I mean, let's just say that. So it's a relatively short time that our officers are committed to being there. Usually it also, in this case, we would probably send the officers down during the both events just to make sure that we're watching and make sure that everything's going okay. I don't think we have any public works requests on this one. Occasionally, they might ask for some barricades, but I don't think they ask for either one of those last time.
Any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section fourteen, old business, there is none. Board comment, is there any board comment?
Yes. So, so was a public comment earlier about balance and revenue and expenses. Using fund balance as a revenue source, not a good way to budget, so just strongly disagree with this. Over the last eight to ten years, the operating budget, which should be balanced, has had an average excess of a million dollars. So significant amount of money has been underestimated on the revenue side. So in essence, the fund balance is came, what was there from under budgeted revenue, so. You know, using the fund balance to, to balance a budget if it's already money that was left over, you could also make an argument that we maybe pass tax increase here and there where we didn't need to, but not making that argument, but I think we, this board does a prudent job as far as the budgets and just wanted to clear that up myself.
Any other board comment? Section sixteen, public comment. From the podium, say your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Blazer, thirty-five, thirty-six, Kaden Bro. Um, I'm saying a problem that I think is important, not because it seems serious. Um, in my neighborhood, all that terror has been a couple of residents double. A curb where the buses are supposed to be, but in three, was people are more stupid and terrible. And this is creating hazard. Now, I, I drive through those roads, I, I'm in that episode. Proud of your blood. And I've had problems getting down roads because those, they said, or the carway has been narrow. People are dumping their crap onto the roads that are being responsible. I think, I realize there are probably a border, more enforcement. But I think somebody has to crack a whip at these places. They have a obligation, responsibility for the living. Go someplace else and get replaced. My immediate neighbors don't seem to have a problem. But Mansion Road, Ronan, parts of Lewis are just one chunk of reeds there for another. Public Works picks them up. I mean, once they get moved, that's obviously not a problem. Why would they sit there? I have a couple of suggestions, somewhat more colorful than others. I said to my wife, you start out with a plane thrower, police cars, one of that, make the leaves go away, it's like, yes. My number two choice would be a paintball gun, work for Angkor Boro and Sparrow and let them hit them with something that everybody will know that they're the object. Seriously, it will at some point create. I'm hoping for what? I'm thinking this is big years. Don't get me wrong, this is, I know this is, I'm, happened, I may be the first person to issue of it. But it really degrades travel unnecessary, simply coming from the putzes. And deputify the neighborhood.
Any other public comment?
All right. If, if I might, I just would make comment that Georgia's team has been notifying our codes department and, and also our police department. We've been regularly out letting people know. I don't know that it's necessarily changing behavior. I know we've ticked off some neighbors, but we have, but we have been, we have been out and violations are being issued from the codes department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neese. Seeing no more public comment, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.